Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order, this regular City Council meeting to order on May 19, 2020, at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Padja Quisnare, City Clerk.
Okay, next. Marshall?
Mike Lee, interim City Manager.
If you can mute your mic if you're not speaking, please. Thank you.
Marshall Ironman, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer.
Thanks.
Michael Wolf, interim Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Manu Montcha, Community Development Director.
Abdul Alat, Fire Chief.
John Salisbury, Chief of Police.
There should be... Is Patty Solano or Steve Quintanilla here?
Yes, yes, I'm here. I was unmuted now. Steve Quintanilla, interim City Attorney.
Great. Okay, any other staff member from the E-Team? Okay. All right. Okay, well, we will continue. Before we hear public comments, I just want to let everyone know that as the mayor, I do ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views or issues concerning our city. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that their comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to know that you agree with the comment. Any person wishing to speak to address the mayor and city council on any matter, either on items on the agenda or off the agenda, will be scheduled to speak so just shortly, actually. And you have sent in your requests through the teleconference procedure by emailing the city clerk. And, okay, so let's go ahead and get started. I believe we do have eight speakers. So we'll go ahead and do three minutes each tonight, and we'll start with Darryl Tarrell, followed by Tom Jurrell, and then Carrie Then. And please keep in mind that your comments are limited to three minutes, so if it goes past that, there is a little timer that you should be able to see. It will automatically mute you. Okay? Let's go ahead and start with Darryl. Thank you.
Tarrell, our lives and our livelihoods depends on us getting through this pandemic together, dignity for everyone. That's why I believe we must rise to this challenge to help our residents. One place to start is our low-wage workers, who many of them are essential workers that do not have the luxury of being safer at home and quarantined with their kids because they have to work. They should not have to choose between going to work and their own health at risk. That's why earlier today, I submitted electronically to the city clerk's office a proposed COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave ordinance that would require businesses who are not subject to the Federal Emergency Paid Leave Act or doesn't provide a minimum of 160 hours of paid leave annually with 500 or more employees nationwide to offer 80 hours of paid sick leave for workers who are impacted by COVID-19. Second, many industries in our community have been hit hard and leaving many of you, our residents, laid off or furloughed trying to make ends meet, hoping to return to work. That's why I also this afternoon submitted two additional ordinances. One is called is the Proposed Right of Recall Ordinance and a Citywide Worker Retention Ordinance that would give you, the resident, a peace of mind. If you lose your job because of COVID-19, you will have a chance to get your job back when the business reopen in order of serenity. And if the business you work for got sold because of the pandemic, the new company must hire you back. It's that simple and fair. You shouldn't be the victim when our economy reopens of people who are either newer, less experienced, or paid less being hired underneath you. So our city needs to protect you. These additional protections will give many of you who have built livelihoods in our community the peace of mind and a reason to hope again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please. Tom Jurrell, followed by Carrie Then. Okay, we'll go to Carrie Then then, and then after that, we'll see if Tom is still available. Carrie Then, followed by Bishop Sykes.
Yes, hello, City Council. I just have a couple of comments regarding the agenda packet and reading about that we're still paying for closed libraries. In the month of March, we paid almost $158,000 for library services. And I just would like to ask, don't we have a force majeure clause or something that would stop us paying for libraries that aren't open to the public and had not been open for the past two months? I'd like to thank the city for finally opening a COVID-19 testing center in cooperation with a local church. Our cases are still rising with 661 cases reported today and 20 deaths, unfortunately. This testing center is greatly needed, especially as the workers return back to the workplace over the next couple of weeks. And I'd also like to thank the city for hosting an emergency food drive this Friday at the rec center. Food is a basic need, and it must be offered to any citizen that needs it during this critical time. My final comments are dealing with some things that happened at the Planning Commission on last Thursday night and comments made by the planning commissioners regarding the approval of new cannabis facilities, especially on Sunny Me Boulevard. As we've all seen over the last couple of days, there were 11 firefighters that were hospitalized this past week in Los Angeles when that city allowed an area to become known as Cannabis Road. A comment was also made by a planning commissioner that it's better to have a cannabis store than to have burned-out buildings along Sunny Me Boulevard. And that's what leads me to this comment that you and the planning commissioner are responsible for the environment and the aesthetics of our city. Over 15 years ago, the city council at that time attempted to make what was a grand entrance to our city at Alessandro. About 10 years ago, another city council decided to make another grand entrance on Sunny Me Boulevard. And now you're planning to build a city center off Nathan and LaSalle. Please take a look at what's accomplished in the past and did and did not work. Obviously, Sunny Me Boulevard has not turned out to be the entrance, the grand entrance to our city that we thought it would be. And I hope the city council goes back and relooks and thinks about Sunny Me Boulevard, and please revisit its plan as to how it's going to be revitalized. We've had so many fires, so many burnt-out buildings there, and so many drug trafficking, prostitution. Please revisit Sunny Me Boulevard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker we have is Bishop Sykes. Okay, followed by Carlos Rivas. Carlos, are you there? Or Bishop Sykes? Okay. And just to remind the public, to let you know, if you do wish to speak, the procedures that we have actually in place is that you email the city clerk, which is at patjn. So the email is patjn@mobile.org. And you just let her know that you wish to speak at the council meeting, and you can do that till 6:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting, and then we'll have you on our list here. Okay, how about Mary? Is Mary here?
Kimberly?
No, it's Mary Popoff.
Popoff.
Is that, is that, yeah, who's Mary Popoff?
This is Mary Popoff Kimberlin.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Well, I'm really concerned about the testing that they're going to be doing, and why aren't they completing it with the antibody test rather than just to test to see if you're positive or negative? Can you hear me?
Yes, you can just go ahead and keep going, because it's not a Q and A. I can talk to you right after.
Okay, and then also potholes in the road homes again over here on Redlands and Cactus. And JFK Boulevard has got a lot of motorcycles that need to be slowed down. But those are everyday things that need to be addressed. But we have a lot of concern these days about getting open and having a say in the city to be able to support each other. And we just need better times, better thinking, and better performance. And we need to work together to do that. And I appreciate being able to address the council today, basically just to keep informed. But I understand Riverside University Hospital is the one that will be doing the testing. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, and do you know if they will be doing the antibody part of the test?
Not my understanding, but we can find out and we can reach out to you. If you, if you email the city clerk, well, actually, we have your email already. So we'll be able to reach out to you and get you that information.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. But our community is following real closely and doing as much as we can. And we're in Mr. Cabrera's district, and a lot of changes and nothing normal anymore. But we need to build up our support in Riverside County. And I would appreciate if anybody, if everybody would be able to do that with this technology here. And then really worried about the rest of the family being in other areas and in school. And AP tests that my grandson took was rejected because they didn't get a chance to accept the load of kids testing, and that's important for them.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much. And just to clarify, I think you did mention JFK and Cactus, and I wrote it down here as well, and I know our city clerk was writing it down. And so what we'll do is we'll open up cases on those and then follow up with that, and then we'll let you know as well, you know, the status of those cases. And then as far as the antibodies tests, I do know that the individual, some individual clinics, actually, and I know through Medi-Cal, if you do have Medi-Cal or just through your insurance, like Blue Shield, they do have the testing for the antibody testing, and it is free along with COVID-19 testing, and that is free as well, just through your regular insurance through Blue Shield. Or if you go with Kaiser, I just know those two. And then obviously, there's the testing sites that the county is actually doing as well. I believe it's, you know, Crosswords Christian Church right off of Ox Springs that now is doing the testing there. So, yeah, no, but definitely, we'll find out more information about the antibody testing. I think that's really important. A lot of times, those are actually usually conducted with the county and usually a local research university. So if you notice with Santa Clara, it was Stanford, Los Angeles, it was with USC. So we'd have to find out, you know, if there would be a local university that would maybe want to partner with the county public health on that. Okay, but we'll follow up on those potholes. All right, next speaker that we have is, that emailed the city clerk, is Angel Lopez, followed by Elmer Thomas. Okay, Angel? Angel? Okay, next speaker we have is Elmer Thomas.
Hi. Hi. Hello. I'm, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the city council. I'm calling because of a abuse of power that I witnessed personally and also that my wife witnessed from Councilman David Marquez in the district that we live in, District III, which is really upsetting considering that we are fairly new to the area and we plan to be here for a very long time. We love Moreno Valley, and we, so I already sent a detailed letter to the council, and I don't think I have time to read it all, but there's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I know that Councilman Marquez believes that nobodies should not be able to speak to you, and that's why we chose to speak publicly instead. And we hope that our exposure of your behavior will positively affect our community because we believe that you need to respect our first responders in all cases, not just when it doesn't benefit you. And I'm hoping that it was a momentary lapse of judgment, but the way I saw you spoke to your wife and the way that you spoke to the female police officer was totally unacceptable and really astounding. I'm like actually blown away and seriously disturbed and fear for the safety of myself and my family. This kind of behavior is not acceptable in any way. And I don't appreciate you stepping in and trying to manipulate the scene and disobeying the officer's orders when she tried to secure the scene for the benefit of your children. I have children myself, so I completely understand where you are coming from, but you should not use your office and repeatedly declare that you're a city employee and spook the officer on scene with your presence and your constant "I'm a city employee" stick. I couldn't even imagine doing that in a public office. Like, that's super embarrassing to me. I can't believe it, and I don't want my, my family to be involved with that sort of behavior from a city official. Obviously, I'm very passionate about that because I looked at your service and I looked at what you're supposed to be about, and it just doesn't match with what I saw. And I hope that I was seeing things, but the problem is, is that there was witnesses. I wasn't seeing things. There were people that saw the way you behaved, and it's not acceptable. And I really hope that you take the time to reflect and think about who it is that you're really serving because it's not just about your family or my family, it's about our community. And I really hope that my words here today can inspire some positive change, not just within our district, but within the city and our greater community. It's our responsibility. And, you know, I'm happy to make further comments. I'm happy to read the letter if necessary. It's my intention to improve the community that I reside in. And wherever I go, wherever I see humans in need, I care, and I would hope that you do too. And from what I saw of your record, it seems like you do. All indications point to awesome stuff that you're trying to do with the community, but your behavior, no.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for speaking, and then we did receive your email as well. Okay, thank you. All right. I'll just go back to the three other speakers that had emailed the city clerk, just to make sure if they're still here. Tom Jurrell, Bishop Sykes, and Carlos Rivas, if you're here.
I believe Tom Jurrell's the 310 number.
Okay, go ahead, Tom Jurrell.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Am I transmitting?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of staff and the public. Nice to be here through the miracle of high-tech. I'm still adjusting to my, my second meeting doing this. But, but I wanted to comment tonight on what I think is an important issue. It's been probably the issue since maybe 100 years before we were a city, and that's the battle between, eternal battle of, between pro-growth and no-growth elements in and around this community. And for the record, I'm a pro-growth, pro-business person. I know it can, you know, bring many good things. It can bring problems, but I believe the problems can be worked out and solved and mitigated if properly implemented. So I'm unabashedly pro-growth. I perfectly believe that the majority, if not all, of the problems we have in Moreno Valley as far as major deficiencies, come back from parent no-growth policies. And I'm even thinking of writing a book on it. I just see so much problems that is created. One example, I've heard people are not happy about the warehouses at Peacock and Ironwood. Well, Walmart wanted to come in there way back in the 80s, and I'm not a big Walmart fan, but it would have been a strong commercial anchor, would have revitalized that old center, would have given us endless, not endless, but substantial tax increment and sales taxes. Plus, it would have brought other quality commercial developments. It area languished for years. Walmart was asked to move the building 50 feet for appearances. Well, they moved it 50 feet. They moved it 50 feet outside the city limits, and Riverside got all that tax. So that's just one of many, many, many examples that I can cite. So I just want to put that in for the record. And again, I'll thank you for your time and wish all well. My health tip of the day, wheatgrass is keep my 70-year-old carcass moving. So I encourage anybody to try it. Water chaser and works for me. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you so much, Tom. And then we do have someone else as well. Just so you know, Mr. Carroll, Fletcher Carroll, I'll go ahead and allow you to speak. But next time, just please email the city clerk, and her email is patjn@mobile.org. Okay, go ahead. You're on. Oh, you're muted. There you go.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I just thought, looking at this, you know, it's a Levian thing of like the parks or like street maintenance thing, it seems, that they're thing we're deciding on today. So I just thought like with this unique opportunity of the COVID-19 going around this year, if we're able to do it every single year, we'll be able to not levy whatever funding is coming to Moreno Valley City, you know? So that would be a good opportunity for us to be able to get money from the government to, you know, help our smaller businesses so-called reopening or whatever, instead of yearly after yearly, like where we always say yes in Moreno Valley, apparently, to like constantly levy, which is like just using the, the fund we get to pay the interest, not necessarily park. So instead of doing it this year, we, I think it would just better to not levy it. So the Moreno Valley will get, you know, the money. And other than that, I feel the same way as the last guy, you know? Most of us are at home. My mom goes to work. She wears her mask, you know, but I'm like stuck at home. I'm fine, a young male, but, you know, it's nice to have assurances that our small businesses are still open when we want to go and get, pick up food or whatever. Yeah, and, and that's how I feel.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate you joining us on Zoom. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, okay. And then we have, let's see here, looking here, yes, we already have Elmer that spoke already, right? Okay, so we're going to move straight to our consent calendar, which is sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar are actually deemed to be routine and something that we do very often, and they're non-controversial items and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council would want more discussion on one of those items. Each item that is voted on is deemed to be a separate.
Was it supposed to call the ballot?
Okay, someone is speaking? Who was that? Okay. All right, so it's supposed to be a separate motion and represents each of the agency items. Items withdrawn for reporter discussion will be heard after the public hearing items. But just keep in mind, the opportunity to speak on agenda items and non-agenda items was just a moment ago. So at this time, if council members would have a request, you could just put your hand up like that, and then I would be able to see, you know, that, you know, you have a comment, or you could just speak and just say, you know, whichever item it is, you know, in case you need to. I know there's some people, and I believe even in some F items as well, that I need to recuse myself. I don't know if there's any items anybody wants to speak on. Okay, seeing none. I don't see where, because usually I'll have you guys all on one screen. We go to the second page here and see. All right. And then Councilmember Marquez, it's noted here that you'll recuse yourself for B4.
B4 and a couple on F items also.
Yeah, okay, so with B4. Okay. All right, so at this moment, I do entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with a recusal of B4 from Councilmember Marquez for conflict.
I move.
All right, motion made by Mayor Marquez. A second?
He can't motion if he's recusing himself from an item.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Your innocence, oh, okay.
Yeah, you're, yeah. Okay, okay. Mayor Pro Tem Baca, would you like to make the motion?
Certainly.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, go ahead, and please vote.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
It's a recusal.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. All right, and so the consent calendar passes. We'll go straight to item F1.
What was, Mayor, can you tell me what was the vote on the consent calendar?
The consent calendar was four yes and one recusal.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and go straight to the public hearing item. We'll go ahead and go to the public hearing F1, which is to approve the final engineer's report. And then if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your mic, thank you, to confirm a diagram and assessments for lighting maintenance district number 2014-01 for fiscal year 2020-21. And we'll have a report from the Public Works Office, Michael Wolf, Director, Assistant City Manager, too. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm going to have our special district district manager, Candace Castle, give this report.
Okay, go ahead, Candace. Michael, do you see her? Or is she with you? Okay, we'll come back to this item. We'll do F2. Or is that also a report of Public Works?
She's here, Mayor. I think she's ready to go now.
Okay, she's ready to go now? Okay, all right, go ahead, Candace.
Thank you. I was trying to get to you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, Special Districts Division Manager. This evening, we're requesting the city council conduct the next five public hearings related to our fixed charges for our special financing districts for the fiscal year 2020-21 property tax bills. The fixed charges are partial charges that the city applies to the property tax bill. They are only levied on those property tax bills where the qualified electors have previously authorized the city to do so. The charges are a continuation of the charges currently levied on the property tax bill. The funds collected are restricted and can only be used for those services authorized by the qualified electors at the time they approve the charge. After conducting each of the following public hearings, the council will be asked to consider approving a maximum charge and an applied charge for the 2020-21 fiscal year. The applied charge is the amount that is actually levied on the property tax bill. It cannot exceed the maximum charge. These public hearings are routine and are required to occur each year. The first item is a public hearing for lighting maintenance district. The first item is a public hearing for lighting maintenance district two thousand fourteen dash zero one. Revenue received from this assessment funds the city's residential street lighting program. The recommendation is to keep the fiscal year twenty 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 one applied rates Same as those applied on the property tax bill in fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. And to increase the maximum rate by a CPI adjustment If the property owners previously authorized that adjustment and the CPI adjustment is two point nine six percent. Staff respectfully requests the City Council first conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony on the item. And upon the close of public hearing, staff requests the City Council approve the recommended actions, Which is no increase to the applied rates from last year's rate. Um and it also includes approving the final assessment engineer's report And adopting the resolution setting the rates for the fiscal year twenty 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 one. And that concludes my presentation on this public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Uh Candace, uh really quick, uh any council questions of staff? Okay, I think you were missing um. Okay, and yep, okay, seeing none. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. And we'll go ahead and open that hearing and uh the public uh testimony and this one, we had no speaker's email on this item. I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Um I do entertain, um but before we do that, I do want to just make sure and clarify to the public That we're not raising any taxes or anything like that. This is a lighting uh maintenance district. Uh it's a continuation uh for basically uh those residents that are already agreed to To have um this property maintenance uh occur in their area. Um and it's only for the residents, so like Candace mentioned, and it's uh to keep the applied rates uh from last year as well. Okay, so at this time, I do entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations numbers two and three.
I move.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez. Yeah, we we need a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember uh Dr. Thornton, uh second the motion. Okay, Madam Clerk, clerk, please uh uh do the voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes, and the item passes um and carries. So we go now to F two, which is a report from Public Works. And this is a very similar item as well, routine, non-controversial. Uh no uh tax increase, no raises or anything like that. Alright, but we'll go ahead and have a hearing anyways, so um Michael Wolf?
Mayor, I'll be making the presentation as well, yes. So this, this is the public hearing for CSD Zones A, C, M, and E Of the city's Community Services District. Zone A funds the city's parks and community services programs. Zone C funds the arterial street lighting program. Zone M funds the landscape maintenance of medians. And Zone E funds the maintenance of public landscaping in certain areas of the community. Uh the recommendation is to keep the charges applied on the next fiscal year's property tax bills At the same rates that were applied on the two thousand nineteen twenty property tax bills. And in those zones where the property owners have previously provided approval, Staff requests that the maximum rates be increased by the annual adjustment, which is the equivalent of uh two point nine six percent. Staff requests the board first conduct the public hearing and upon its close, Adopt the resolution setting the maximum and applied rates for fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one. And again, there is uh no recommendation that the applied rates increase from the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Um at this time, any council questions of staff? Do you see none? We'll go ahead and open the. Yes, go ahead.
Candace, on these fundings, the city is is we don't profit from these fundings, correct?
No, um the funding is used to provide the services that the qualified electors uh approved for. So for example, for the street lighting program, the funding that we receive for Zone C Uh funds the um operation and maintenance costs to provide those services to our residents.
Thank you.
Alright, um seeing no other council questions of staff, we'll go ahead and open the hearing. The hearing is now opened and uh we'll go ahead and close the hearing, uh since we already had public testimony. Um and at this time, I do entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Cabrera?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by uh Mayor Protembaka, go ahead and please vote. That was Cabrera and Baca. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead and do roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes by vice.
Thank you so much. We're now gonna move to uh item F three. Excuse me, which is a public hearing to continue the Moreno Valley Community Services District annual parcel uh charges Uh for fiscal year twenty twenty one Zone S. And again, uh it's a routine co- um it's a routine item, non-controversial, no increases Uh in any of those areas. Uh but we have to hear this item anyways uh every year. So uh Candace, will you be doing this item as well?
I will, I I'll get this one and the next two.
Okay, and then also, I do believe um that Mayor Protembaka, she's going to recuse herself, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you. So um just uh don't vote on this item. Alright, go ahead, Candace.
Okay, uh this is the public hearing for Zone S. Revenue received from Zone S funds the maintenance of certain landscaping improvements alongside Amyne Boulevard. The property owners in this district have authorized an annual adjustment equivalent to the CPI to the maximum rate. And staff recommends that that adjustment only occur to the maximum rate. Uh however, as in other districts, staff recommends keeping the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one Applied rate to the property tax bills the same as it was for the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year. Staff recommends the CSD Board conduct a public hearing to receive testimony on the Zone S. And upon its close, adopt staff's recommendations to set the maximum and applied rates. And again, uh mayor and honorable councilmembers, The um proposed applied rate just is not proposed to change from the current fiscal year's rate. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Alright, uh any council questions of staff on this item for F three? Okay, seeing none, uh go ahead and open the hearing. The hearing is now open. Um we've already heard a public testimony, close the hearing. Any uh council deliberation? You see none. I'll entertain a motion uh by council to approve staff's recommendations Numbers two and three with a recusal for Mayor Protembaka. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Marquez?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Cabrera, and that's Marquez and Cabrera. Madam Clerk, please vote. Roll call.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka recused herself?
I'm abstaining due to uh property ownership in the district.
Oh, you're recusing yourself?
Yes.
Recusing, yeah, not an extension.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes, and um item passes, so it's uh four eyes, one recusal. Um and just to let everybody know, uh one of the reasons why we're having to recuse ourselves from certain uh items here is just because Uh we live in a certain and we can't vote on that item if we live right within that area, uh that neighborhood. Okay, so like for example, F four uh is very similar to this as well. So this is a Community Services District annual parcel charges. And at this time, on this one, I'm gonna turn over the meeting to Mayor Protembaka. And she's gonna lead the meeting because I'm going to recuse myself from item F four. And also uh item F five as well, and so will uh Councilmember Marquez. So we won't be voting on these or discussing, uh we'll just turn it over to Mayor Protembaka. Okay, Mayor Protembaka, you're on.
Okay, yeah, uh item F F four, staff report will be given by
Mayor Protem, I'll be making that presentation as well.
Okay, thank you Candace.
Mayor Protem, uh members of the City Council, this public hearing is for the Community Services District Zone D. Revenue received from Zone D funds the maintenance of public landscaping improvements surrounding certain residential developments throughout the city. Staff recommends the CSD of Board approve the fiscal year twenty 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 one applied rates At the same rates as those set for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty With an adjustment to the maximum rates in those cases where the property owners have previously approved an adjustment. After conducting the public hearing, approval is requested for staff's recommendation as noted in the staff report. And just to really iterate, like in the prior public hearings, We are not requesting an increase in the applied rate for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh Mayor Protem, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, um Candace. Are there any questions from the council for staff? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the hearing. And uh public testimony, we heard all the testimony at the beginning of the council meeting, we'll close the public testimony. And um I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations two and three.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Thornton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Uh Councilmember Marquez recused himself, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez recused himself? Motion passes three eyes, two recusals.
Okay, thank you. We'll move over to item F five. And we'll have uh recusal from Mayor Gutierrez and Co- uh Marquez. Okay, and staff report will be by
Mayor Protem, I'll make that presentation as well.
Okay, thank you Candace.
Uh Mayor Protem, Members of the City Council, this public hearing is for the Landscape Maintenance District two thousand fourteen dash zero two. Revenue received from these assessments funds the maintenance of public landscaping in certain developments throughout the community. Staff recommends keeping the repla- the rates applied to the fiscal year twenty 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 one property tax bills The same as those applied to the two thousand nineteen twenty property tax bills. And adjusting the maximum rate by an annual adjustment in those cases where the property owners have previously authorized an adjustment. This report also recommends amending the capital improvement plan for those areas with the resources to use for renovation projects. Staff recommends the CSD Board conduct a public hearing and upon its close, Approve staff's recommendations to set the twenty 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 one rates. Approve the final assessment engineer's report and approve this CIP and its uh its related budget. And again, uh Mayor Protem, Members of the City Council, we are not recommending any changes in the applied rate for this fiscal year. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you Candace. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Just raise your hand, like looking at you. None? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Being that the public testimony took place at the beginning of the meeting, I'll close the hearing. And I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number two, three, and four.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion made by uh Councilmember Carla Thornton and seconded by Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez recused himself, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez recused himself, motion passes three, the eyes, two recusals.
Okay, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to uh Mayor Gutierrez and I will be recusing myself from item F six.
Great, thank you so much. And I believe we have Mayor Protembaka recusing and also Councilmember Marquez. Is that correct, Councilmember? Yes, okay, alright. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with item public, uh actually item F six. And we'll go ahead and have a report from Public Works. Is that Candace again?
Uh Mr. Mayor, this is my, I'll give that presentation. We'll switch it up on you here.
Alright.
So this is the presentation or an item this evening uh for the National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System Parcel Charge. This is a public hearing very similar to the hearings we just had, but this one's for MPDS. Specifically, it's for the parcel charge for next fiscal year, it's fiscal years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one. This is our standard process for continuing that fiscal year charge. Uh this is to address the state-required permit for managing discharges of city storm drain system. Uh the parcel charge covers uh the costs associated with managing those requirements. And uh this parcel charge was approved via the ballot process by the property owners. And the city does this uh via the county tax bill, um and approves the charges, uh the charges are approved by council. So in fiscal year twenty twenty one, we are recommending no increase in the implied uh amount from the fiscal year nineteen twenty 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 charge. So with that, staff recommends uh conducting the public hearing and taking testimony, uh then close the public hearing and absent any compelling testimony otherwise, Approve the maximum and the applied charges presented in the staff report and adopt the resolution. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you so much, uh Mr. Wolf. We'll go ahead and have uh council questions of staff. Any council questions of staff? Seeing none. Okay, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Okay, any uh public testimony, uh we didn't have anyone uh email the city clerk on this item. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. And I do uh entertain a motion by council to recommend, to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two and three.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez recused himself, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protem recused herself, Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes three eyes, two recusals.
Great, thank you so much. Now we're gonna move on to item F seven, Which is uh public hearing for unpainted delinquent uh nuisance abatement charges. So we'll go ahead and have a report from the Community Development Department. Mr. Mancha. Okay, Community Development Department?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. Uh this item is a, is from the community, I mean, excuse me, the Code and and Neighborhood Service Division perform, performance of public nuisance abatement or removal of hazardous and other Uh nuisance uh conditions from various properties in the city. Uh notices are posted on properties uh for these nuisances and compliances is is given Uh to the property owners uh on a, on a period of time. Uh if these properties aren't complied with, uh the city hires a contractor to complete the The uh abatement of the nuisance or the hazardous material and uh is also Uh given a no uh invoice to pay for the abatement. Uh recognizing the financial hardship caused by the coronavirus as part of prior actions By the city's uh this uh disaster council. The city has suspended penalties and interests on late fees uh and occurred in uh March of nineteen, excuse me, eighteen twenty uh twenty. In order to maintain consistency with the council's direction, the action proposed this evening will allow the council to defer fifty percent Of the payment amount until December ten twenty twenty and the remaining fifty percent until April ten of twenty twenty one. By placing these delinquent charges on the uh fiscal year twenty 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 one. Um adopting this resolution would facilitate the recovery of of these fees that are incurred by the city For nuisance abatement and hazardous uh reduction were performed by a contractor. So before we deny it, it is basically to recover the the cost that the city uh pays To uh remove uh nuisance or hazardous material in the city. Uh these are, uh these are not uh fees other than for the main uh the abatement of these uh hazardous material. That concludes staff's report.
Hey, thank you so much, uh uh Mr. Manny Mancha, I appreciate that. Uh we'll go ahead and have um council questions of staff on this item. Okay, seeing no council questions of staff, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Any uh public testimony, we did receive one public testimony via email. Um and so Carrie, uh then uh she emailed the city clerk. And again, if you wanted to speak on this, Uh the procedure is to email the city clerk at patj. uh, the procedure is to email the city clerk at patjn@mobile.org to be put on our list. So uh, we'll go ahead and allow uh, two minutes. Uh, go ahead, Carrie, you're on.
Uh, yes Mayor, thank you. Um, I wanted to point out to city council that um, while it's uh, very good that the city is taking every effort possible to help business and help our residents with respect to the COVID crisis, that the abatement fees that I noticed um, in the agenda packet, all, all one hundred percent, say one, occurred prior to the COVID crisis. And the only one that occurred during the COVID crisis was a repeat offender um, that had four different abatement fees assessed against it. It's a, a property on Heacock, and I'm sure we're all familiar with it, it's surrounded by chain link fence. Uh, that chain link fence was put in place by the city apparently according to the ledger. So while I absolutely understand the need to help business and to help our residents, um, the fact of the matter is, is that every one of these abatement fees occurred outside of the COVID crisis except the one. And this property had four um, uh, issues or, or code violations logged against it. Um, I am a property owner in the city of Moreno Valley. I've heard constant complaints from property owners with dumping and um, TVs being left and mattresses being left and just crazy dumping going on in the city. Especially now that the dump was closed, people don't know if it's open. Of course, the dump is open. Um, I too take care of a property, but I also take care of city property that surrounds uh, my half acre. Um, the city property that I take care of, on one side of it is two hundred feet, the other side is about a hundred and sixty feet. And I take care of the entire easement to make sure when people throw out trash or beer bottles or, you know, uh, bags of uh, of fast food, that I pick it up. Um, these property owners obviously had egregious, egregious code violations. And I, I just want to point out to the council that if you approve this, you're really approving what is essentially violations that occurred not within the COVID crisis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and hearing is now closed. Any council deliberation on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion by council to, yes?
Let's have a quick question. So I just want to clarify that this does give the property owners additional time to rectify the issue. I, I wanted to ask that to staff.
Yes.
Uh, Council, yes, uh, what, what it is, is again, the, the properties have been cleaned and we're, what we're doing is we're recouping the costs that the city put out to pay the contractor. So again, all we're doing is, is we're putting the uh, the outstanding payment onto their uh, property tax bill.
Okay, right. So, so then the goal is that the next time that their property tax bill comes, that's when we'll be able to recoup the costs?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. Okay, alright, so um, now that we don't have any deliberation, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two, three, and four.
So moved.
And moved by Mayor Protem Baca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, please vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Thornton? Councilmember Thornton?
Sorry, I muted myself. Yes, yes.
Um, Councilmember Marquez?
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes five eyes.
Great, thank you so much. Alright, we're gonna go to uh, city reports. City council reports, we'll have a March Joint Powers Commission meeting. Um, and uh, we'll have, uh, Mayor Protem Baca, go ahead if you can get that report.
Hey, thank you. Uh, tonight I'm providing a, an update from the March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on May the thirteenth. At that meeting, the commission learned that the March Inland Port Airport Authority has been identified to receive a hundred and fifty seven thousand of the CARES app funds from the FAA. We approved repair work for the airport's bulk fuel storage tank. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much Mayor Protem. We'll go ahead and now have a report from city manager's report. Hey, good evening Mike. You have to, there you go.
Uh, thank you Mayor. Members of the city council, just a couple items I just want to address, uh, some of the speakers had tonight. First is, I want to ensure the residents that city hall and all the operation of the city, we are continuing to function. Our police department is out there patrolling the streets, our fire department is out there rescuing people. Our maintenance department is aggressively out there fixing the streets and cleaning up our, our parks. And also our library is still operational. I want to make sure that we have our library service on the online format. It is uh, it is out there and uh, residents could access that through mobile.org backslash library. And also they could actually call the library at nine five one four one three three eight eight zero. And somebody at the main library will pick up and answer some of the questions you may have. Also, there was a comment about a lot of the potholes. I just want to uh, let the residents know that the city council has appropriate additional funds to fix our pothole on a recent, uh, previous meeting. So uh, in addition to what was previously budgeted for, for pothole repair, uh, the council had appropriated another two hundred thousand dollars for additional pothole repair. And the stretch on cactus that is slated for pothole repair sometime in the very near future. This concludes my uh, presentation uh, tonight uh, on city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you so much Mike, appreciate that report. Uh, very concise, very thorough. Appreciate that. Thank you for all your hard work as well. Uh, we'll have a report from our city attorney's office. Steve Keaton, uh, you're muted Steve.
I'm unmuted now, okay. Well hello everyone, Mr. Mayor, council and everyone out there. Um, I just like to report on some of the um, cor- coronavirus efforts and the orders, as everyone probably knows already, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors rescinded, basically rescinded most of the, most of the uh, orders that were issued by the public health officer. And basically what that means is that we are reverting back to the governor's executive orders, but just want to state right now that it does not impact any local orders that the city council adopts. So I have some good news and bad news. Uh, the governor has reported that in early June, we're probably have, start having pro sports games returning. The bad news, no fans. Uh, also retail businesses are gonna be um, approved for opening up. The bad news there, you won't be able to go in and try on any clothes, but you'll be able to pick up everything curbside. And also the counties are going to be allowed to uh, petition the state to get approval to allow inside dining in our restaurants. And so that process is gonna go on, but the bad news there, that means no more to-go margaritas from Chili's. And the last thing, I gotta say, uh, for my own protection, there's good news and good news because the governor reported that in a matter of weeks, we're all gonna be able to get a haircut and we'll be able to start going to church. So that concludes my report for today.
Great, thank you so much Steve, appreciate it. Okay, uh, we now have the closing comments uh, from council members and we'll start with Councilmember Dr. Thornton, followed by Councilwoman Marquez. And it'll be a five minutes each, so uh, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Thornton. Go ahead, you're on.
Thank, thank you Mayor. Uh, first I wanted to tell our residents there's still an opportunity to be involved with uh, the general plan update. We currently have a survey going on, uh, it's called the Future Growth Concept Survey. Um, and this is a great way for you to provide your input concerning um, you, um, the uh, your viewpoint on the long range vision of Moreno Valley. So that survey actually closes tomorrow. So please um, participate in that. Uh, second, I'm um, very enthused to hear um, and to say that we have a COVID nineteen um, uh, location that's opened up. Uh, Bishop Sykes, I know you called on him earlier. Um, I really appreciate his willingness to have the testing site on, on his church property, which is Crosswords Christian Church, located at two one four zero one Box Springs Road between eight AM and four PM. You can get the testing um, um, Monday through Friday. It is by appointment only, so please call one eight hundred nine four five six one seven one if you would like to get the COVID nineteen uh, test. I'd like to thank my colleagues for passing A sixteen, which is a Forward Mobile Small Business Grant. This is part of um, our continued effort to support our businesses and those who are experiencing um, uh, really financial insecurities. And what this grant does is um, uh, each business is available, is eligible up to seventy five hundred dollars. And up to forty five businesses will be able to uh, benefit from this. So there will be a um, application process coming out soon, so look forward to that since it was approved tonight. So that was, that's a big win for our, our, our local businesses. And lastly, um, we will be having another effort to feed um, individuals who are experiencing uh, food insecurities in our community. Um, on Friday, I'm sorry, um, on Friday we will be having uh, May twenty second, this upcoming Friday from eight thirty to ten thirty at the Civic Center. We will be doing an emergency drive-through food distribution. In addition, we still have the senior meals program going, and then we have um, other programs will be partnered with restaurants to do delivery. So this is our continued effort to really uh, help try to combat the food insecurities that our residents are experiencing at every level. So please stop by if you know someone or you yourself are experiencing um, uh, financial issues or if you need additional food, that will be happening this Friday. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you so much Councilmember, and we'll have uh, now uh, Councilmember Marquez.
Uh, can you hear me? Loud and clear. Okay, I want to say to the residents of Moreno Valley, be safe out there. And thank you for following the public health orders. Um, you know, it's not mandatory, but it's recommended highly that you wear your um, face mask and do your, your six foot distance. Um, I wanted to tell the residents, you know, we can show these other cities in this county that, that we're number one by following these orders and have less positive tests and less deaths out there. So let, let's keep on um, with these masks. And if you want to wear gloves, wear gloves. Um, and, and let's all get back to, to being businesses open up, be normal out here. And other than that, uh, just be safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much Councilwoman Marquez. Uh, we have Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Mayor Protem Baca.
Thank you Mayor. Uh, good evening, want to start this to everyone. Um, first of all, just thank you to all Moreno Valley residents who are tuning in right now, who have participated via Zoom and are watching and listening to the council meeting. Um, you know, it's always good to see you and to hear from you as well. Um, so just want to uh, mention a few things, um, just as a friendly reminder of, you know, everything that's going on in our city, um, things that, plans that are currently coming to fruition. Uh, for example, um, the, the um, general plan update, uh, the downtown Moreno Valley, uh, the new amphitheater, the new library that's gonna open in August. Uh, just, just uh, as a reminder, because it seems like uh, the worst of the pandemic uh, uh, in this area. Like we still have a lot of work to do, but it seems like the worst uh, is behind us. So now, uh, moving forward, looking into the future, um, coming out of this pandemic in the fall, there's gonna be a lot of uh, really good opportunities for us and our community uh, to go out and um, you know, have new facilities here in the city. And a lot of that is due to, you know, my colleagues, uh, all of us working as a team, uh, city staff working as a team. And especially um, you know, with our city finances and our budget and being in a strong fiscal position uh, to be able to do all of these things when a lot of other jurisdictions are really hurting. Um, so there's a lot of things to look forward to, um, you know, uh, closer to the fall. So I also want to mention a program that was announced by the governor weeks ago. It's actually now up and running. It's a disaster relief assistance for undocumented individuals. Um, in, in the inland empire, specifically Riverside and San Marino County is, TODEC is in charge of distributing those funds. And um, you can qualify for a minimum of five hundred dollars and possibly more for every child that you have. So you can uh, call nine five one nine four three one nine five five, Monday through Friday from nine to five. Um, you know, feel free to call TODEC, they're very busy, so just keep that in mind. They might not be able to answer quickly. But please reach out to them and apply for that funding. It's, it is available. All you have to do is call and apply. Again, the phone number is nine five one nine four three one nine five five. Um, I also want to mention the pandemic EBT program. This is for families with children who currently qualify for free and reduced meals. Um, they may also qualify for up to three hundred and sixty five dollars per child while their school is closed. So you should have already heard something from your school district, or you may have already received the actual EBT card in the mail. Uh, those started going out on May twelfth, and they're going out in the mail through May twenty second. Uh, so if you don't receive your EBT card by May twenty second, then uh, please apply online by June thirtieth. And the website for that is ca dot P E B T dot org. Again, the name of the program is a pandemic EBT program, and that's for families who qualify for free and reduced meals. So please uh, look into that as well. Uh, I do want to thank the mayor and the staff as well for the senior eats program. I know you guys worked really hard to secure that for our community and, and that's a blessing. That's a true blessing that we're, that we have this new program. We're able to keep feeding more community members, more residents, more seniors here in our city. And uh, that, that's, I believe a hundred and fifty or more seniors that uh, less that are struggling to find food and to put food on the table. So I want to thank the mayor uh, and all of our staff and my colleagues for making that happen. I also want to mention that um, there is a, the, like Councilmember Thornton already mentioned, the free emergency food distribution this Friday. Um, look forward to seeing a lot of you there. Also, the drive-up testing continues to be available. That's highly recommended. You can make an appointment at eight hundred nine four five six one seven one. And I also want to thank uh, Pastor Sykes over at Crossword for working with the different government agencies and hosting this because it's really important and he, it's actually the first site here in our community. So thank you for that. And uh, with that, I just want to wish everyone a good evening. Thank you again for tuning in. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Mayor Protem Baca.
Okay, thank you for unmuting me. Okay, first of all, I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm really um, happy and um, encouraged on item A sixteen, which is Forward Mobile, because we have some extra CDVG funds that we will be able to provide to small businesses of twenty or less employees. And I really look forward to seeing that um, our businesses apply and us making sure that those funds get spent. And I know that there's a lot of uh, businesses in District One that have been shut down and that are really suffering. So I look forward to seeing them get some funds to help them and hopefully we reopen pretty soon, sooner than later. And um, I'm proud of, of the program Mobile Meals, which provides senior citizens and persons with disabilities with food, and they either come to city hall and pick some up, or our staff will deliver it to their homes. Another program that I'm really proud of because it serves two purposes. We have senior eats where our citizens, senior citizens in most need, they're not receiving uh, other types of help or assistance for meals, receive home-cooked meals from restaurants. And it, the second thing is that it helps our restaurants keep busy. So I'm really happy that our local restaurants are able to uh, benefit from this program as our seniors are as well. Um, we, we're very busy here at Moreno Valley. We have a lot of um, uh, projects going on. The, the latest one was uh, the Kaiser Medical Center. We approved the, the twenty-year expansion that they're growing. And I'm just so happy to know that we're moving dirt here in Moreno Valley. So you know, keep helping us and keep, you know, supporting us because we're working here for you. And um, in District One, we have the Moreno Valley Amphitheater. If you s- go by there, you'll see the earth movers moving dirt and it's getting, it's gonna get built. It's almost ready, not, you know, not as soon as it should be because of what, what happened, but it's gonna get built. We also have the district on um, Hemlock and Heacock. Uh, floor and decor already open, but if you can go by there, you see the earth movers. We have a lot going on there and it's gonna be a beautiful sight. Give us, give us uh, time. It's kind of like uh, metamorphosis. Right now it's in the cocoon stage, but pretty soon it'll be a beautiful butterfly. And um, this Friday we have the emergency drive-through food, food distribution. Please be there Friday. You're gonna drive through, no one's gonna get off, no one's gonna do anything, just drive through and pick up a box of. Just drive through and pick up a box of food. And please tell all your friends, your neighbors, everybody qualifies. But get there at 8:30. No one will be allowed to enter any earlier than 8:30, but there'll be lines. So please be ready to drive on through. And finally, I want to say, you know, we're at home and maybe we have a little bit of spare time. So fill out those census 2020 forms and mail them back. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potembaka. I really appreciate that. And then just for my concluding comments, first, I just want to congratulate our city manager, our interim city manager, and now he is our permanent city manager. So I want to say congratulations, Mike, and well deserved. And that was also on the consent calendar, and, you know, we're just really blessed to have you here in our city. You work very, very hard in really supporting the employees and thinking also of innovative programs. So on behalf of the council, thank you. Thank you. I also want to just give a little brief status as far as where we're kind of at as far as with the whole COVID-19 situation as a city. And so our ICU rates countywide have actually been dropping, which is actually a very good thing. They were about 73. If you can mute your mic, whoever's in the background. There, I got it. I got it returned. Okay. So, so yeah, the ICU rates have actually been dropping, which is a really great, from 73 now to 68. Our hospitalization rates as well have been dropping as well. And that's why I do welcome the governor's proposal and reopening, of reopening California safely. And I think he is going to be making sure that we take safe precautions. And as a city, we want to make sure that we take safe precautions as well. So on Monday, May 18th, he announced that he is going to allow counties to move faster in that stage, within that stage of stage two, which means that Moreno Valley residents would have the opportunity to go to dine-in, restaurants, also retail, those kinds of things, shopping malls. Now, keep in mind, those businesses do have to follow certain measures and guidelines from the Public Health Department, California Health Department. And if you want to get more information on that, there's actually guidelines for each industry. So if it's a dine-in restaurant or depending on whatever industry it is, you can actually go to So if you go to that website, you'll be able to actually see all the guidelines that the governor is requiring for businesses to comply. And then the other thing is, because we don't have the restrictions from the county health department, we're actually following the governor's orders at this time. So, you know, keep that in mind, you know, if you do own a business or, you know, there's a lot of things that they're requiring, which I think is a good thing, you know, gloves, you know, face masks for the employees, sneeze guards, those kinds of things, making sure that there's a sanitation schedule going on after each use. So all of those things is what's going to get us out of this. So we need to really follow that as you do own a business and making sure that we are in compliance. It's very, very, very important. So I do welcome his proposal. I do want to say that I'm very, very proud of our staff, very, very proud of our staff and very proud of our council for their support. I had about a couple weeks ago introduced the program, Senior Eats, Mobile Senior Eats. And this is where we're really putting the pedal to the metal, I guess you could say. We're really helping our seniors. Because we have another program called Mobile Meals, and that was helping about 500 seniors. And then we had another program through FSA that was helping about 150 seniors. But this program is very strategic and is going to be helping the seniors with the most need, the most vulnerable. And so I'm very, very excited to have introduced that program because it's something that's going to help our residents. It provides two meals a day from great, great restaurants. I believe Woody's Restaurant is one of them. Sapaca's Mexican Restaurant as well. So there's a lot of great restaurants. I think there's seven of them that actually are participating and providing healthy meals for our seniors. And so I was able to participate in a drive-along, and I was able to see how positive it was and how the seniors are just so grateful, so, so grateful for this program. And I'm actually, just to keep in mind, we are one of the only cities in the county that participates in this program as a direct provider with the state. So keep that in mind, because the other cities, you know, not to put any other cities down or anything, but the other cities are not direct providers, so only the county is the direct provider, except Moreno Valley. So Moreno Valley is actually a direct provider. And so we're able to make, make sure that we're providing those meals to our seniors, so keeping that food local. And then at the same time, making sure that we're helping our businesses with the revenue, and then it helps our sales tax for our city, and then we keep those local jobs right here in Moreno Valley. So for me, it was a no-brainer that we had to sign up. Even though we had a long shot, I thought, you know, or some people thought, you know what, we made it and we were approved. So I'm really, really excited about that. I do want to talk a little bit about the governor's budget cuts. Unfortunately, he is proposing a lot of cuts about, because the state is going to face over $54 billion deficit. And so he's focusing a lot of those cuts in education. And, and I understand, you know, where he's coming from, and I appreciate his leadership and everything that he's done. But, you know, I am concerned about the cuts to the after-school program. It's about over $100 million to our ACIS program. The city runs a after-school program, and we contract with Think Together, and we help about 5,000 children each day with after-school services. And that could definitely be eliminated with this $100 million cut. So as mayor, I've actually drafted a letter to the governor's office to see if there's a way to, maybe we can stop that and not, you know, do those cuts to that program. I'm also working with our local school district partners as well, Superintendent McCormick from Valverde Unified School District, and then also the superintendent from Moreno Valley Unified, Ketsiora, in a joint letter to really figure out, you know, another way, you know, to save that program. And then also the cuts just to education in general. And I understand the cuts need to come from somewhere, unfortunately, because there is a deficit. But we're hoping that it's really not on the kids because, you know, they had no cause to all of this or anything like that, and, and they're our future. And so we, as a former educator, I want to make sure that we're putting them first, and they're the ones that are going to need our help the most. I am very excited about the Forward Mobile program. This is a senior program, basically for our great businesses. And I say senior because the businesses that have been around in, in our city for a very long time that are mom-and-pop shops. We wanted to make sure, and I thank the council, we wanted to make sure that we were supporting our mom-and-pop businesses. And so what this program basically does, like Councilmember Thornton mentioned, it provides $7,500, so $7,500 micro grant money to these businesses, who unfortunately were not able to access money through the Triple P program at the federal government level or the disaster loan relief program. So some of these businesses weren't able to get access to it for a variety of reasons. And so this program is very strategic and it's going to help them. And so I really thank the council and the staff and everyone for putting this forward, because this is what, what it's about. You know, we got to step up, you know, to help our businesses, and they're going to be unfortunately struggling a lot. So I do encourage residents, you know, to continue to wear your face mask, continue to wear your face mask. It's still important. It's not a law or anything like that in the state of California, or it's not a law in the county. But it's very important that you can help slow the spread, right? We want to make sure that we're not inundating our healthcare system. So continue to do that and continue just to, to pray, continue to pray for our city and for the residents in our community. You know, there's a lot of residents going through a tough time right now, you know, lack of employment, stress, kids at the house, and, you know, and they're just having to deal with a lot of various stressors. And that can put a lot on mental health. And by the way, it's Mental Health Awareness Month. So it's important to celebrate that and to reach out for help if need be. So with that, I will conclude our, our meeting and adjourn our meeting at 7:20 PM. All right. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.